Good evening, Santa Monica. Excuse me, thank you. If the council can come to order, good evening, Santa Monica, and welcome to the Thursday, July 14th, 2022, special meeting of the Santa Monica City Council. So this is a special city council meeting, but let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Davis, welcome home. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Para.
They'll be back.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Negrete.
They'll be back.
Councilmember Brock.
Yes.
Councilmember De La Torre.
Here.
Mayor Potem McCollin.
Here.
And Mayor Himmelrich.
Here. And so we do have five people, so we can do this Agenda Management number item now. And that is, I'd like to take a vote to hear item 12A before we hear the other items on the calendar out of respect for our project team. So moved.
Second.
Can we do it by acclamation?
Yes.
Any objections? Okay, by acclamation, we are going to hear item 12A first, and let me read a statement about this before we go. And that is this. "In accordance with Charter Section 615, the adoption of all ordinances and resolutions shall be by reading of title only unless a council member present dissents." And on that note, let's call the first item.
So the first item we have is public input on, I guess, eight items and on the 16 item. And we have five speakers. Our first speaker is Denise Barton.
Okay, so I will call the first three speakers. I'm going to ask you to line up against the wall. And this is on... Yeah, what is this on, 8A?
This is on, yes, this is on 8A. And... Yeah, it's all on 8A.
But I thought continued items part of the closed session special agenda or complete calendar only, is it?
No, it's just, it's the remain... So it would be 8A, it would be items 8A and 16A. I'm sorry, so all of the, all of the boards and commission items. And then this, and then the 16 item. Yeah, and then the hearing has to be separate, correct.
Got you. So Denise Barton, and I'm sorry, Mohammed, and it's AZADR, and the rest of it's cut off, so I'm afraid I can't pronounce her whole name since I can't see it. And then it looks like Olga Z. And finally, there are four names here. Do we have five?
No, it's four.
Okay.
Olga is, well, I guess there's a time donation if she's here.
Who's donating? Well, let's start, Ms. Barton. Oh, wait, I can, got it.
Good evening. I would like to encourage you not to reappoint Lorna Kamner to the Housing Commission due to the fact that she has a clear conflict of interest with Abundant Housing LA as well as being on this, isn't she on the Steering Commission for Santa Monica Forward? And the Steering Commission for Santa Monica Forward's out of involvement with any kind of endorsement of candidates for the city council, which would also be a conflict of interest. So I encourage you not to reappoint Lorna Kamner to the Housing Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. And now Mohammed, as I said, I'm sorry, I can't, don't know, Mohammed AZADR? No? And Ms. Roska. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, you were behind the glare.
Yes.
I'm sorry, so do you have time donated from whom? Will you raise your hand, please, whoever is donating? And what's your name, please? Thank you very much. Okay, so that's Anna Shapiro. Ms. Roska.
Good evening. I'm looking forward to Mayor Himmelrich recusing herself from participating in the appointments to the Housing Commission due to her previously self-reported bias. Four months ago, the mayor recused herself from an item that sought to remove Commissioner Kamner from the Housing Commission. In the highly emotional recusal, the mayor told us that when her husband became ineligible to serve out his term on the Housing Commission due to the new anti-nepotism law, she became so traumatized that she now had a strong bias around the item. Shortly thereafter, apparently due to the same bias, Mayor Himmelrich attempted to suspend the Housing Commission. Since her husband was no longer on it and the mayor's political allies lost the majority on it, she wanted to incapacitate the commission until the annual appointments, where she was hoping to appoint some of her lackeys. Please note that the mayor has also stated her desire to dissolve the Housing Commission altogether. Now that she has no political influence over it, apparently she wants to nix it. Mayor Himmelrich, you can't have it both ways and say that you can be unbiased now conveniently at the time of the annual appointments to the Housing Commission. Please recuse yourself to show the residents you have an ounce of ethics left in you. As for the applicants, I object to the reappointment of Lenora Kamner. Ms. Kamner collects a salary to direct the operations of a legislative advocacy organization called Abundant Housing LA, an organization which is funded with dark money and which pushes a specific political agenda, one of forced urban density. Abundant Housing LA's 2021 Annual Report reads in part, quote, "In 2021, we co-sponsored AB 1401, a bill to reform local parking requirements, and mobilized members to support SB 9 and 10. The victories of SB 9 and 10 were a major victory and a symbolic renouncement of the exclusionary single-family zoning, driving housing scarcity and high costs throughout the state. Finally, Abundant Housing LA formed a PAC and is planning to make endorsements and campaign for pro-housing candidates in 2022," end quote. Does anyone believe that while at a Housing Commission meeting, Ms. Kamner takes off her lobbyist hat or her Abundant Housing LA hat and acts just as a resident of Santa Monica? I witnessed Ms. Kamner use the Housing Commission as a platform for her organization's political agenda over and over again. This must stop. We need regular residents on city commissions, not people who are hired guns on the payroll of astroturf organizations. For the past six months, since there was a, since there was a political shift within the Housing Commission due to new appointments, Ms. Kamner has been engaging in disruptive behavior during commission meetings. For example, she launched into a seven-minute monologue about an issue unrelated to an agenda item, and then threw a tantrum when reminded by the presiding officer that she was off-topic and the commission had to move on. Ms. Kamner later filed an unsubstantiated formal complaint with the city regarding the incident, where she claimed her First Amendment rights were infringed upon. Recently, Ms. Kamner vigorously opposed the proposal by one of the commissioners to invite a guest to speak on the cost of housing in Santa Monica. Ms. Kamner does not like the proposed speaker. Ms. Kamner attempted to blackmail the commission by saying that if the guest is invited, another guest must also be invited, one that she likes and approves of. And let me remind everyone that Ms. Kamner and her organization, Abundant Housing LA, have been under investigation by the Fair Political Practices Commission for over a year now. Please do not reappoint Lenora Kamner to the Housing Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roska. And so now do we move to 12A? Is public comment or should, yes, right? Okay, good. So public comment on 12A, and I have a lot of speakers.
Well, Mayor, hold on a second. Let's go ahead and call the item. So it's adoption of resolutions and introduction and first reading of an ordinance to adopt the Ocean Avenue Project Development Agreement. And again, I'm going to read this again. "In accordance with Charter Section 615, the adoption of all ordinances and resolutions shall be by reading of title only unless a council member present dissents." And Mayor, you may want to start off with the ex parte communication.
And, well, so then I think you better do it now before public comment.
I think it'd be, it'd be right, the right thing to do for me to recuse myself from this item. Mr. Worth's Family Foundation has supported the Pico Youth and Family Center in previous years. And as many of you know, I work at the Pico Youth and Family Center. And even though my compensation from the PYSC derives from an endowment, I want to prevent the perception of a conflict. So I think it's appropriate for me. And I discussed this with City Attorney Sloan today, and we both agreed that it would be appropriate for me to recuse myself from the item, to avoid the perception of a conflict.
So, so thank you. So I guess you'll leave, and then we'll text you when we go back to appointments. Is that right? So now let's begin our public comment. Any year. It's okay.
Mayor, did you want to do the ex parte first?
Oh, yeah, so we can do ex parties and give. Okay, go ahead. There you go. Oops, my phone just covered up my calendar here. Hang on a sec. On June 27th, I met with Jeff Worth at his office on Ocean Avenue at 4:00 PM. We discussed the project, and I examined the two models that are here in the City Council chamber today. Thank you. Thank you.
On Friday, July... That for last Friday was.
Day before I, the day after I did it.
July 8th?
Yeah.
July 8th. I met with Mr. Worth, Paula Larmour, and I forget Jenna's last name, and at the site, and spent about an hour there going over the project and hearing their presentation, the project. And that's it.
Here we go. I think.
Oh, and I did, Jenna was kind enough to buy me a black cup, a cup of black coffee.
Oh, no.
I just want to make sure that that's noted
Yeah, so maybe I should go. So on the Thursday, if you were the eighth, I was the seventh. I met with Mr. Worth and Jenna. And on Thursday, July 7th, sorry, at 3:00 PM, I met with Mr. Worth and Jenna, and Tony Vasquez was with me. I reviewed the models, we talked about the project. We had met, boy, several years ago about the project. Had not talked for a long time, but had had conversations about, at that time, about many of the issues, and, and all of the issues I had were addressed in this iteration. Councilmember Brock.
I met with Jeff Worth at his office and looked at the model below on Monday, May 23rd, at 1:00 PM. That was my only meeting regarding the project.
And Christine, I'm sorry, and I hate to rush you. Are you up? We're just in, so Christine and Lana.
July 8th, Christine.
My apologies. Just trying to help somebody outside. On July 8th, I met with Mr. Worth, with Jenna, and with Paula Larmour. We had an, I had an opportunity to take a look at the model and to review the scope of the project. And I believe that's it. That was the only time that I had any conversations at all with anybody about the project. Thank you.
For the sake of time, I'm just going to say that it was end of May or beginning of June, I met with, I'm sorry, I went to the Frank Gehry project location to, is that what we're talking about right now? To observe, to speak to everybody that was involved, including Paula Larmour, about the years of this project and what it's gone through, and to have questions answered. That was it.
And now that we've had our ex partes, I think we're ready for maybe start. We need to do the staff report, Mayor, I'm sorry. Yes, so, yes, so now we're ready to discuss. Okay, and I'm going to read three names. No, no, the staff report, Mayor. We need to do the staff report first. Right, right, I'm sorry.
When you do comment.
Give me a second, Roxanne. Is this you, right?
All right. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, Roxanne Tannenmore, principal planner. And on behalf of the entire city team, who has worked closely with planning staff and the applicant team, I am pleased to present the Ocean Avenue Development Agreement project for your consideration. This is a carefully studied and negotiated mixed-use project for our downtown with substantial community benefits that features adaptive reuse of historic buildings, outstanding architecture, new deed restricted affordable housing, construction of hotel, dining, and retail uses, and a new cultural uses campus designed to present world-class exhibitions and programs. Tonight's staff presentation will provide a high-level overview of the project and community benefits and the guiding principles that shape the city's review process. The staff report, draft development agreement, and series of attachments presented for this item provide the record and the basis for staff's recommendation that the council take the five actions provided here on your slide in support of project approval. In terms of background, I will go ahead and orient the council on this project, although I know you know it for members of the public who are watching. This site is located in our west end of downtown. It's located within the downtown community plan area. There are three different zoning districts that overlay the site, including an additional established large sites overlay. It is within the coastal zone and is subject to Coastal Commission regulations. With respect to neighborhood context, Ocean Avenue, Santa Monica Boulevard, and Second Street have a full range of building heights and styles, including a number of historic buildings that are located on the 1300 and 1400 blocks of Ocean Avenue. The project site is 82,500 square feet. It's 11 parcels, which are separated in part by First Court, which is adjacent to Santa Monica Boulevard. There are three commercial buildings in addition to a mixed-use, a commercial and residential building, which has 19 units. And there are also two surface parking lots. This is a quick view of two of the important buildings on the parcel that will be retained. There are two designated city landmarks. One is a Queen Anne Victorian-style residential building, originally built as residential, that reflects that early development pattern on the, on the avenue. As well, there is a Spanish colonial revival style architecture building that is, that was originally built as a mixed-use building, which also reflects that transition of the Boulevard toward commercial uses. In terms of the project timeline, which is presented in detailing your staff report, this application was originally filed in 2013. A pivotal moment came when the project was put on hold pending the outcome and the adoption of the Downtown Community Plan. That was accomplished in July of 2017. The applicant did redesign the project and resubmitted in compliance with the Downtown Community Plan. In June of 2018, this council provided unanimous direction to proceed with the negotiations, and staff did work through that process. There have been community meetings, EIR review, as well as courtesy reviews between, before the Landmarks Commission and ARB. The Planning Commission reviewed the project and provided a unanimous recommendation to this council to approve the project in May and provided some recommendations that are outlined fully in your attachment C to the staff report. The Downtown Community Plan really is the foundation for the planning principles. As we reviewed this project, there was broad community participation in the development of that plan. It established the framework for development standards and the review process that this project has gone through. This is a quick view of some of the key development standards that are prescribed by the DCP, including that maximum building height of 130 feet. This project does have the opportunity to request up to a 4.0 floor area ratio. This project proposes 25% less than the allowable floor area for this site. It does meet all of the open space requirements and exceeds those, in fact. In terms of guiding principles, as we went through the city review and also the city negotiations for community benefits, we really prioritized place-making, outstanding architecture, sustainability, enhancing the pedestrian environment, promoting job creation, increasing economic investment and revenue to really support our ability as a city to provide services that are needed at this time. Part of that city review began initially on the site plan. We looked at the massing strategy, the treatment of the landmarks. The project went through significant technical review regarding utilities, public right-of-way, circulation, sustainability. That was all built into the project design that's before you. The project components are outlined in your staff report. This is a project that has a full-service hotel, 100, excuse me, 100 residential units, which does include 25 deed restricted affordable units as part of that 100. All 19 existing units will be replaced as part of the project. There's ground floor, restaurant, retail, and other commercial space. And there... And there is that cultural uses campus, which I will describe in greater detail in a few moments. As part of the project, there's also a variety of publicly accessible open spaces in the project, which I'll show a site plan for. There's also a proposed establishment of a ped mall on a portion of First Court that would be subject to a separate council action. There is vehicle and bicycle parking provided as well. In terms of site planning and design, just want to highlight a couple of things that has occurred with the overall site plan since the adoption of the DCP. Importantly, the applicant team did work with city staff. They reduced the overall building height in compliance with the plan. They also eliminated condominiums that are in the original 2013 proposal. The range of building heights in the project is shown on your slide. Really, there was an emphasis on articulating those building forms, especially around the residential components, more so through this process. The treatment of the historic buildings was also a focal point for city staff and the applicant team. The project before you really complies with the standards and creates a really interesting and unique contemporary and historic presence along Ocean Avenue through the execution of this project. The open space plan, there are a wide variety of gathering places designed into this project. There's ground level, there's podium level, and there are upper level open spaces. Shown here on this diagram is the area where the ped mall would be established. This is just a quick view of the podium and upper levels to show you the open space that's been built in particularly for the residential uses there on the top of your slide. As well, on the low, on the right-hand side is a view of the publicly accessible rooftop, top viewing deck, which is atop the hotel building. This is a quick diagram around the mobility and parking, the way the site was designed, really creating an uninterrupted pedestrian environment along Santa Monica Boulevard and Ocean Avenue. And you can see the diagram how vehicles will move through the site. There is a new vehicle access way that's created with exiting right turn only onto Second Street. In terms of negotiated community benefits, those are outlined in detail, both in your staff report as well as in the section 2.8 of your development agreement. Really, the negotiation was informed by the priorities that were outlined in the downtown community plan around cultural facilities, preservation and housing. In terms of the way staff described and sort of couched the community benefit package, it is substantial. We did not attempt to monetize all of the community benefits. We do have some numbers here that are conservative estimates around the hard costs, construction of the cultural uses campus, the preservation and the construction of the rooftop deck. It's important to note that these community benefits, not all of them have assigned values, but they're quite important. Affordable housing, the operational commitment for the cultural facility. Exact dollar amounts have not been established through this review process, but they are significant to the project as a whole. I'm going to focus on the cultural uses campus for a moment. This is the primary community benefit for the project. The applicant is committed to construct, operate and maintain a cultural uses campus for the life of the project. This campus has been designed to attract and exhibit works of local, international, established and emerging artists, including architects. And the museum will be open to the public. We have outlined in the development agreement all the terms around the use, the operations, the access by the public. An important component is also the requirement to implement an education and community programming plan. This is to ensure that the youth education, the higher education research and the broader outreach to community members is really a pivotal and part of this project for the life of the project. The applicant has estimated conservatively in today's dollars that it would cost approximately $1.85 million to operate and maintain the museum annually. The cultural uses campus, as set forth in the development agreement, includes community benefits for residents, including admission waivers and discounts for students. There's a benefit for annual field trips that include transportation for our local public schools and nonprofit organizations serving youth. This community benefit is extraordinary and really unprecedented for the negotiations the city has conducted through a private development. This is an opportunity to expand Santa Monica's art and cultural offerings in a really meaningful way. And this will provide a community benefit for many years to come. The project also includes deed-restricted affordable. We did negotiate five additional moderate income units. That brings the total for the project to 25% of the 100 will be deed-restricted affordable. Income levels range from 30%, extremely low income, all the way up to moderate. And there's the historic preservation component that I've touched on. There's the publicly accessible open space and observation deck, which does have the $1 entry fee with CPI adjustments with the net income being donated to the Santa Monica Ed Foundation. There's also the community benefit that has been negotiated and really offered and committed to by the applicant that Gary Partners will continue to serve as the lead project architect for the project to ensure that the highest level and quality of design and construction will be executed. There are a host of sustainable design features that were negotiated for this project. In combination with the code requirements, this project does present and achieve a high level of sustainability. Those, those features are outlined on this slide and described in more detail on your staff report. This was something that was focused on heavily through our city review. We have local hiring provisions, which does outline who targeted job applicants and outreach will be structured for. That's contained in your staff report and development agreement. There's also an annual internship program for students with priority for high school students and Santa Monica college students. There's an outreach requirement really focusing on the local community. In terms of impact fees, those were negotiated as contributions. We did escalate the base fees by eight and a half percent. The totals are outlined here for you. The total impact fee contribution is over $6 million, which does include $250,000 for an Economic Equity and Opportunity Fund contribution, which we think will be important. This council will be able to establish how those monies are spent through a public process in the future. In terms of fiscal and economic impact analysis, this really helps provide a snapshot of the economic and fiscal value of the project to the city. There is several analyses provided with your staff report. There are several thousand construction jobs that are anticipated over the three-year construction period. And with first year of stabilized operations, it's anticipated there would be $3.4 million of net new positive impact to the city's general fund. In terms of financial feasibility, there is a long discussion in a separate analysis and in your staff report. The bottom line is that our consultants did study a scenario where there would not necessarily need to be a full subsidy of the cultural facility operations by the applicant, but nevertheless, the investment return would still be below the industry-accepted profit margin for a project of this type. This project is exempt from CEQA, however, for the purposes of informed decision-making. The city did prepare an environmental impact report in compliance with CEQA for this project. We followed all of the necessary and required steps to prepare and release and circulate a draft EIR. We did provide an extended comment period since that was during the COVID shutdown. We did a 90-day review period and we analyzed a range of environmental issues that are set forth in your staff report. In summary, the EIR identified two significant and unavoidable impacts. There is a mitigation monitoring program and response to comments that are provided in your final EIR that was provided with your staff report. Staff is recommending that this council certify the EIR and adopt a statement of overriding considerations and adopt that mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Your staff report also provides the consistency analysis for this project with respect to the downtown community plan and the 2010 land use and circulation element. That's provided for you and the findings are contained in your staff report. This project does require an amendment to the local coastal plan that was partially certified in 1992. That is to ensure consistency with the downtown community plan parameters that apply to this site. Also important to note that that LUP amendment would only be in effect for this particular project and not for the larger floor area parameter that was established in the downtown plan. There has been a number of opportunities for community comment, questions and input on this project over the years. I've outlined on this slide and in your staff report, a range of the questions and concerns that were raised, really more so around questions about when the project would be anticipated to start construction, how is traffic mitigation, construction mitigation being dealt with. There were some concerns about, a question raised about geology, about glare and concern about blocking views. There's been wide support for this project. You've received, like, last time I counted over 40 email letters in support of the project as outlined here. And with that, the five staff recommendations are provided for you here. I am happy to answer questions and thank you for your patience and your time on the presentation.
Any questions from council? Seeing none now, I have something set up here that is wrong. I, I think the applicant has 10 minutes and there is no appellate, unless I miss something really big in the report. So it, so seeing no questions, I assume we hear the applicant's report before we hear public comment. Is that correct? Good, so let's hear from the applicant. So, Mr. Worth, you have 10 minutes total and you can set aside some time if you want to comment further after public comment.
Yes, I'm told I'm supposed to reserve two minutes.
You're told?
Yes, people.
Whoever, you were right.
I've been directed.
Got you. So the clerk will tell you when your eight minutes is up. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff. I'm gonna go quick. There's a person you'd rather hear from who's gonna be speaking after me, but I do want to run through, I think Roxanne covered everything I was gonna say, actually. Unfortunately, I brought this fancy point, but it's only gonna shoot back in my face if I try to use it on that screen. So I don't want to, I don't, I don't think this is viewed by the audience. I don't want to show it on here. This is a quick site plan, as you've seen. It's right in front of us. The hotel is number five. The tallest portion of the project, as we've talked about, is open to the public. That's the portion that has the 130 feet. The average height of the entire project is 48 feet, one inches. 60% of this project, over half of it, is between 45 feet and below. This is a view from the pier, looking back. Frank will talk more about the design. He's more gifted on that than I am, but we think it fits very well into the landscape of what, what is here. A key part of this, 815 feet of pedestrian, what I'll call pedestrian safe frontage from Second Street down to Santa Monica along Ocean. What we have today, this is our current view looking from Ocean up Santa Monica Boulevard. This is what it looked like in the future, wider sidewalks and some, and the paseos. You can see the gentleman walking right through the driveway, looking down at his phone. Cars come in that driveway and people are walking. It's a big conflict that exists today. This is what that will be in the future, all pedestrian only, no cars. This is our alley intersecting into Santa Monica Boulevard today, and this is what that will look like in the future. The, we talked already, Roxanne already talked about the housing component, the 100 units. All of the existing tenants on the site will be made available to come back to the project and they'll be accommodated in the interim, moving off during construction and moving back in by us. Museum, I like this view better. It shows how the two landmarks will be integrated into the museum. Obviously, it was already mentioned, but we are providing both transportation and free access to students in Santa Monica from both the elementary school up through the college. We're gonna have a free day for residents and we're gonna have discounts for, per month, and discounts for both residents and, and youth in Santa Monica. The observation deck, right, we've talked about this. We, we made sure the tallest portion of this project was available to the public. We feel pretty strongly about the idea of the dollar entry fee. We think it's nominal, but we think it'll generate a pretty significant revenue stream for the Santa Monica Education Foundation forever. And I think it's, it's almost like, you know, creating an endowment for them that will be something they can use to support their services over the long term. This on the left, which you can't read, is the page of the DCP that laid out the five goals for this project. We feel we far exceeded expectations, even our own, on meeting all five of those goals. I think staff had already gone through pretty detailed analysis of how we met all those goals. The sustainability features this project is something else we're very proud of. It's a LEED Platinum project. I believe we might be the first project to actually use reclaimed water for all approved uses throughout the hotel and the apartments. 100% green power, solar, EV, transportation plans to help reduce trips. We, staff went through the community benefit contributions. We're, you know, we have a local hire initiative, both for the construction and for the ongoing operations at the hotel and the retail tenants. I'm gonna bring Frank up, but I just wanted to end with this. This, this project was complicated, right? I know that we started with you in 2013. We actually started with Gary Partners in 2007. The families owned the property since 1980, so 42 years. We've been working on it for 15 years with their firm. We've been with the city now for nine, and we wouldn't be this far if it wasn't for the tremendous amount of work that has been done with, with staff on, on all levels. And we just appreciate, want to say appreciate all the time that's been put into this project by, by the city.
Hi, I'm Frank Gehry. I'm honored to be in this room again. I started coming to this room. It looked a little different in the 60s when Perry Scott was city manager. Does anybody know that? Anyway, a lot of my life has been spent in this room over time. Some of it didn't get built. Jeff Worth has been an ideal client. He's, he has a lot of the same values I have about scale and humanity. We just opened a project in downtown LA, Grand Avenue, yesterday. So I'm sorry you can't go see it before you vote, but I'd put that forward as how I deal with scale and relationship to existing buildings and trying to create a sense of place. That was really, really important to me. The idea of the architecture and art museum was not mine. That came from the developer. And I think at the beginning he offered it to me as a Frank Gehry museum, which I turned down. Much rather have it be open to a lot of growth and people and young people. There isn't such a museum anywhere in our part of town. And so I think I've, I've committed to, as long as I'm around, to make it easy for him to get connected to young architects, people at the architecture schools in the community. And, and a lot of, most of my life in, in Santa Monica has been spent with a lot of the artists that you've all heard of. Including this young lady, where's she going? So I've been here for a long time. I'm really proud of it, this project. I think we've worked hard to make it fit the scale of what the city, I guess I'm. I think we've worked hard to make it fit the scale of what the city, I guess I'm connected to an earlier city because since we started on this, they've been building these five-and-two dammed apartment buildings all along all your streets, all our streets, that changed the whole scale of the town. It's not my favorite thing about what's going on here. But I tried to show a way to make it where you can do both, where you can make good spaces and contribute feeling, buildings with feeling.
No, please finish. Well, before you go though, I did, so I want to say that, thank you so much for honoring us with your presence tonight. I think we're all really excited, we wanted to make sure that we were all here, unfortunately, Councilmember DeLittori had to...
Call me anytime, I'll come by.
Oh yeah? Then I will. Then I will. I think it's beautiful, but I don't want to eat into their time, but I do want to ask Mr. Worth to talk about what he did with rent control units in light of our very long conversation about rent control units and how I think you handled it in a way that was so humane that I really appreciate. Much to you.
I never get that.
And you won't tonight.
So the first meeting we had on this project was with the Rent Control Board. That was the very first meeting that we had. And what we agreed to do at that time and still exists today is that we will take all the existing tenants and we will pay to move them into another unit while the project's being built, and we'll keep their rent where it is, and we'll pay the difference, and we'll pay to move them back into this project, and we'll keep their rent where it is when they move back in. That answers the question, that was something that we decided at the very beginning that we thought was important to do.
No, for that I thank you, and for the fact that as long as I've been working for you, there's never been a concern I expressed that you have not addressed, and I really appreciate that. And in fact, this is the only large project downtown I think that I'll be voting yes on, so there you go.
And we're available for questions later if there are any.
Thank you very much. So now we have our public comment and I will read the names, and so here's how we're gonna do it, because there are many people, I'll read three names after the second person speaks, I'll read three more. You can line up against that wall or sit in a seat near that wall and we can do it and I'll give everybody a sense. As of right now, we have eighteen public speakers. So let me start with the first three names, that would be Alicia Magnano, Emily McCarron, and Tommy Fave.
Good evening, I am Alicia Magnano, a proud Santa Monica resident and a parent of a student at Edison Language Academy. I am an engaged and committed school and Ed Foundation volunteer. It is my way of giving back to our community. I know firsthand the positive impact the Ed Foundation has on our public schools and our children's education, so, which is why my husband and I chose Santa Monica as our home, so that our son could benefit from really good schools with lots of enrichment opportunities. It was exciting for me to learn about the Ocean Avenue Project's rooftop observation deck in the Cultural Arts Museum. I believe wholeheartedly that the wisest investments of the proceeds from the observation deck would be in our schools and children through the Ed Foundation. The museum's focus on education and exposing our young people to real-world possibilities of design, problem-solving, and educational programming makes this the perfect partnership for our students. I am hopeful that you will choose our children as the beneficiary of the proceeds of the observation deck through the Santa Monica Education Foundation. Our family looks forward to enjoying all that the Cultural Arts Museum and Rooftop Observation Deck have to offer for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Magnano. Emily McCarron, please.
Hi.
Thank you. Good evening.
I hope you can hear me through the three masks.
We can, thank you, and you're the perfect height to talk to that green light.
Oh, yeah. Hi, and good evening, I'm Emily McCarron. I'm a resident of the mid-city neighborhood and a proud pedestrian. You know, it's been hard to see through the angst of the pandemic and economic crisis, but at our core, Santa Monicans are fun and creative and optimistic people. We love our public spaces, we love to walk, we love to eat out, we love Palisades Park, we're in love with our beaches and the ocean and those amazing sunsets. We're so lucky to live here and we're lucky that the developer understands the Santa Monicaans' character and expectations. Hiring Frank Greer was a stroke of genius and I'm sure a major investment in the future of our community. Even the models and images we see tonight reflect back to us all of the joy, creativity, and positivity that's been pent up for two and a half years. It expresses the energy and enthusiasm that has given this coastal community the wow factor for more than a hundred years. This project is color and light and pretty curves and sexy surfaces and variety without a smidgen of garishness. I'm sure you have heard the list of project benefits over and over, so I won't repeat them, but I will say for all the brain-sparking sophistication of the design, the Ocean Avenue Project is really designed for our kids. Their education, their parks, a panoramic view of our gorgeous environment, and in the museum, the chance to see the amazing process that goes into designing a city. Let's capture lightning in a bottle, let's do it. Please vote yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCarron. And now I'm gonna call Mr. Fave, and I'm gonna call the next three names before you start speaking, and you can line up against that wall. That would be Kurt Peterson, Denise Barton, and Matt Stauffer. And now, you're up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and fellow City Council members, city staff, and the public that's here tonight. I wanted to recognize our IBW Local Eleven brothers and sisters that's here tonight to support the Ocean Avenue Project, and we wanted to thank the applicant for negotiating a project labor agreement with the LAOC Building Trades. We know how important projects like this could bring to a community, especially community members that belong to IBW and that are going through apprenticeship program, our journeyman, wireman, that live in Santa Monica because they can invest here in Santa Monica and work, live, and play. And I also wanted to say to Frank Gary, I think every project that he architects and plans, there's always a project labor agreement on those with the developer community, and I wanted to thank for all his hard work that he does and working with the building trades, especially in the downtown LA area and over here in Santa Monica. I wanted to give like a brief background about myself. I know I worked over here in Santa Monica at the Water Gardens when I was a fourth-year apprentice with Anderson and Howard, and that was, I think that was the last time I was here, in late nineties, early two thousand. So it's great to be back, especially when it comes to a really great project like this, and then also attaching environmental standards to it when it comes to EV, solar, and other environmental standards. So we look forward to working together with the developer, especially our LA and OC Building Trades, Chris is here as well, so, thank you very much, my name is...
Thanks so much for being here tonight. So, guys, I hate to rain on everyone's parade, but we have a rule here, and that is no noise. So when you want to applaud people, and Mr. Gary's different, but we let that go. We let that go, but now that's over, and now when you want to say everything's great, you do your happy hands, right? Just like this, right? It's easy and it doesn't make any noise, and then I won't have to say again, please. Okay, let's go.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Kurt Peterson, I'm a co-president of Unite Here Local Eleven, the other Local Eleven in that represents workers. We represent thirty thousand professional food service and hotel workers who are the backbone of this region's most important industry, tourism. More than two decades ago, in coalition with community religious and political leaders, including some of those in the audience today and some of you, we set a vision to transform Santa Monica's booming tourist industry from one based on poverty-level jobs to one rooted in sustainability and justice for all stakeholders. We have made remarkable progress towards this vision. Room attendants at Union Hotels will soon earn twenty-five dollars an hour, they have safe and fair workloads, and all of them, thanks to a law you passed after nine eleven, the first one in this country, will return to their jobs after they were all laid off during the pandemic. What is extraordinary about the Ocean Avenue Project is that it sets a new standard for what it means to build a just and sustainable tourism economy. Not only does it promise life-transforming jobs for local residents, but it also merges environmental sustainability, housing affordability, and as you talked about, the replacement of rent control units. We urge the City Council to approve the Ocean Avenue Project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peterson. Denise Barton.
Good evening. I still have undressed concern about the Jeff Worth project, starting with both this project and the Miramar expansion being done on an unstable bluff. I would encourage everyone to look up Palisades Bluff Landslide under FEMA with the date of June sixth, twenty twenty-one, which states, yes, the geological structure and exposure of the site, together with the site's history, even in the FEMA records from past disasters, provides substantial documentation of the site's prior instability and ongoing natural erosion. Yet the developer's resources found there to be no problem. Do you see a discrepancy? Kind of like the city saying there's no asbestos in the cement dust coming from the demolition of Parking Structure Three after a local business owner got an independent positive test result for asbestos. So might an independent study and report on the negative effects this project could have on the bluffs in Palisades Park be necessary? Then in regard to the sequoia exemptions on transit, you remember that you changed the distance from a quarter mile to half a mile to transit? So just because you changed it doesn't mean Sequo did. Might that be one of the reasons the project on Fifth and Broadway shouldn't have gotten a sequoia exemption? And of course, the Coastal Commission has not approved this project yet either. So would this be like the Shore Hotel where the building was built without Coastal Commission approval? Next, earthquake faults. I've seen fault maps more recent than the city's cut-and-paste two thousand and ten Google Maps in their two thousand and fourteen seismic report, yet it was neither not submitted or approved due to Santa Monica not coming up on Caltech's state map. Because the faults that I've seen show the Anticapodune Fault coming in from the coast on Santa Monica Boulevard, along with other more recent maps showing the Malibu Coast Fault connecting to the Santa Monica Fault and that connecting to the Hollywood Fault, in addition to them all being active, along with the Anticapodune Fault now connecting with the Compton Fault in the Bay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. And now, Mr. Stauffer, if you can come up, and I'm gonna call three more names. Burya Finkel, James Mary O'Connor, and Elizabeth H.A.R., I'm sorry, some of these names are truncated, they're cut off on my screen, so I don't know your full name. So it's Elizabeth H.A.R.T., and you finish the rest, there you go. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. Matt Stauffer, I'm here on behalf of the Santa Monica Chamber of Commerce, representing six hundred local businesses in support of this project. The applicants gave a detailed presentation to our members in June, earning their support for this project's ability to reinvigorate Ocean Avenue with new affordable and market-rate housing, dining and retail options, and a unique educational opportunity to learn about the career of a world-class architect, Frank Gary. The chamber respectfully urges you to jumpstart the local economy with good local jobs and tax revenues to the city by approving this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Burya Finkel, hi, Burya, welcome.
Thank you, nice to see you in the fishbowl.
Yes, nice to see you.
Yeah. I met Frank Gary in the early sixties when he was designing straight walls for Victor Gruen. Gary was part of the artist community, and we all appreciated his talent, humanity, and smarts. When he went on his own, within a few years, the world shook. He designed an architecture, captured the imagination of people, and created a new language in architecture. Frank Gary's architecture follows the trajectory of the sun, the wind, and the need of this client, the community, and the historical aspect of the space. He followed the recommendations that you gave him of reducing the size of the building that was reduced by one hundred feet to have a multi-use building. The frontal of the, an ocean for the community and visitors to enjoy, a hotel, condos, rental, and affordable housing. He created a sustainable way to support our schools, an open observation space with minimal fee to enter to the rooftop of the building, and conserve the history of the houses that we had on the Palisades for exciting new uses. And most of all, a place for the community to a museum that will feature his work and local artists' work. Something he, we had not been able to do up until now. The most important aspect of the...
Burya, Burya, your time is up, if you could...
You want to ask me a question?
No, I, will you finish your answer?
Be happy if you do.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, I just, I have one paragraph.
Okay.
The most important aspect of the building will be the revival of downtown. Frank Gary's work is known worldwide as an economic stimulus for the city and the region. I urge you to follow the Planning Commission appeals and make us all happy for the future of Santa Monica.
Thank you, Burya, thank you for coming tonight. So now we have, oh wait, I lost my place, sorry, James Mary O'Connor, is that right?
Yes, that's right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I mean, what an incredible project, right? I mean, this is just gorgeous, to be here a moment in time, and I think this is about the city itself reaching out and creating an image of itself, and it really pulls forward. Look at this building, there is no back. Frank has a way, and I think I've seen a lot of, I'm an architect and I've seen a lot of Frank's work from Cove Bay to Berlin, and what's extraordinary, I always thought was the constraints, grappling with the actual constraints of the problem is what actually has generated Frank's best work. And there's lots of constraints here, but he has a way of turning that, it's almost like judo, turning those constraints into something that you didn't imagine. And this is a moment in time, and I'm so delighted to be here, to see the work and Gary project. I only have one thing I'd like to say, that I think the affordable housing is great. Our teachers, and they really have been cut out of a lot, they're cut out of the rent to get into the city, they're cut out of buying. If some way, some of those units could be for our teachers, I think that would be extraordinary. They're giving so much to the city and the support of the Ed Foundation is a real step forward. But I urge you tonight to approve this, I'm so delighted, for everybody here tonight, this is a moment in history. Let the building begin. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now Elizabeth and I, can't wait to hear what your last name is, that I can't see, but wait here for a minute, and then we have Alvangelas, Tom Clays, and Caroline Edwards. You may line up behind...
Hartwell.
Oh, Hartwell. How can you see that? Oh, everybody gets the whole name but me. Oh, you know what? I bet I can move, no, I can't. Okay, so Ms. Hartwell, please.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, Council members, brothers and sisters. My name is Elizabeth Hartwell, as you so eloquently just stated, and I'm here on behalf of the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor. We represent over 800,000 union members in over 300 unions and other labor organizations. We are proud to support this project, which will provide many good jobs for years to come. This project also supplements these good jobs with strong environmental protections and affordable housing, which working people urgently need. We urge you to vote yes and support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hartwell, now that I know your name. Thank you for your help. Yes, Mr. Gellis.
Good evening, Mayor Hemerich, Council members. I think we can all agree, this is a wonderful project, so I am here to lend my support. I'm here today representing myself as an 18-year resident here in Santa Monica, although most of you know that I do wear a couple hats in the community. One is the Chair of the Santa Monica Travel and Tourism Board, and the other as a Recreation and Parks Commissioner. So, but again, representing my own views, I think this is wonderful. I think we'd be remiss if we do not jump all over this opportunity. And I will share that a few years ago, I saw a documentary about the Guggenheim Museum in Bilbao, Spain, which Mr. Gehry blessed them with that masterpiece. And they did several interviews of different residents from, in Bilbao, some who were involved with it becoming a thing and some who were against it. And the people who were against it then, in 1997 or mid-'90s, whenever they were discussing it, openly said to the world that they were wrong. This was, we should have been for this. This is the right thing. It turned our city around. It got us back on the map. Now, we're already on the map. Our city's already going in the right direction, that this will just make Santa Monica that much better. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Mr. Clays.
I think the time that Carolyn Edwards provided, she is...
Oh, so she provided you with time?
Yes.
So, so let me, since you're now the third person, kind of in a way, you're going to have four minutes, but let me call the next three, so we don't get hung up here. Caroline Edwards, oh, I'm sorry, she's Zakaya. Nancy Setner and Zakia, sorry, and Chris Hannan. So those are our next three, if you line up on the wall. And excuse me, Zakia, for mispronouncing your name. And now, you have four minutes, Mr. Clays.
Thank you. Mayor Hemerich and Council members, I'm Tom Clays, President of the Santa Monica Conservancy. I'm speaking on behalf of the organization today to express our enthusiastic support for the Ocean Avenue project. Carolyn Edwards, who's donated time, is on our board as well, with her husband here, Bill Edwards, and also supporting the project. We see the Frank Gehry buildings will become architectural icons immediately upon completion, but we're especially gratified by the fact that the two designated historic landmarks on Ocean Avenue are incorporated into the project in a very meaningful way. The landmarks are vernacular buildings that reflect past historical styles and uses that reflect our city's history. They will both become the central core of the new cultural campus that adds a new museum and cultural activity to the site. Incorporating these small landmark buildings into the project requires extraordinary commitment by the project team. The landmarks will have to be moved two times, repositioned on new foundations, secured while excavation and construction continue to go on around them. And then they will be adaptively reused for the renovated cultural campus. New construction at their rear increases the capacity to serve as a cultural venue and incorporates them into the distinctive Frank Gehry design. Mr. Gehry, as most of us know, is a Prisker Award-winning architect, world-renowned, and a local resident. I'm proud to say. Having this cultural facility here that features Frank's architectural accomplishments, as well as those of other great architects and creative people, should be a great source of pride for the community and should enhance our cultural profile. The cultural complex will become a destination for residents and visitors alike. It will provide educational activities for the public, as well as youth programs. And we're heartened by the developers' commitments to make the museum affordable for residents and guarantee the subsidy on operations so that this is a long-term asset for the community. Great care and planning is required to manage the relocation, rehabilitation, and adaptive reuse of the landmarks, and we salute the project team for undertaking this challenging task. They're committed to follow historic preservation guidelines, even restoring lost architectural features that are documented from historic photographs, which will lend an even more interesting design to the project. Historic preservation professionals have been involved in the project over years and have informed the environmental impact report and mitigations. Their expertise will continue to be part of the project implementation. So from our perspective, this Ocean Avenue project brings new life and vitality to both the designated landmark buildings with creative new uses as part of this exciting cultural facility. And the dialogue between the vintage Queen Anne Building, the Spanish Colonial Revival Building, with their contemporary Frank Gehry designs is a visual bridge between our past and our future that demonstrates the value of historic preservation as a community asset. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clays. Zakia.
Good evening. I am speaking tonight as a mother of four children who have attended Santa Monica Unified School District schools and have benefited from the wonderful program sponsored by the Santa Monica Education Foundation. Two of my children have graduated from the district, and I still have two more in the district who have four and six years respectively left in the district. One at John Adams Middle School and the other entering into the Michelle and Barack Obama Project-Based Learning Center. And I'm so hoping that once this project is approved, our students will be able to geek out and collaborate with you all. A key focus of this project will be on education, which really excites me. It will expose youth to the challenges and possibilities of design and how architecture is a way to solve problems, challenge the imagination, and work collaboratively. The museum will include high-quality, diverse educational and community programming, and it will also provide funding to the Santa Monica Education Foundation, so they can continue to provide music and art programs to all students in SMNUSD. Yay! I'm really excited about that, because I'm like a super cheerleader for them. I wholeheartedly believe in the Education Foundation's mission and have been a steadfast supporter of the organization, both as a volunteer and as a donor. The Education Foundation is financially prudent and has a stellar reputation in our community. As a parent and PTA leader, I got involved with the Education Foundation over a decade ago, when we were going through the whole thing of how we should fund programs and how we should pool the resources together so that every student can benefit. I see every student benefiting from this project and the observation. To have access to this project, to the observation deck, and the equitable programming that it provides. I am hopeful that you will vote...
I'm sorry. I hate to tell you, your time is up.
All right. Vote yes.
And I am trying to.
If I can say one more.
Thank you.
Just vote yes.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, Nancy Setner, please.
Good evening.
Did I say that right?
Mr. Gehry, it's an honor that you're here tonight. And good evening to the council. I'm a longtime resident of Santa Monica, a long, long time resident, and I am proud to come and speak about the Ocean Avenue project that is designed by Mr. Gehry. It will bring a wide range of community-friendly uses and benefits to residents and visitors from all over the world. It will be an exceptional hotel that will anchor the project and also, which is wonderful, addressing the housing crisis. 100 new rental apartments, including 25 new affordable units, replacement rent-controlled and market-rate units. A signature public art element will be located on the widened pedestrian thoroughfare at Ocean Avenue and Santa Monica Boulevard. This project will have generous, open spaces that are being prioritized for the public, including the creation of a new walk street on Second Court Alley, passeos throughout the site, and publicly accessible viewing deck, which will offer spectacular views of Santa Monica, the Pacific Ocean, and the Santa Monica Mountains. There'll be a variety of restaurants and shops, including outdoor dining. The project also incorporates environmentally friendly design techniques, materials, and technology into the building to create a sustainable project achieving lead, uh, Palladium Certification. I think that this project will change the face of Santa Monica forever. I support the project, and please vote yes.
Thank you, Ms. Setner. And now we have Chris Hannan, and our last two speakers, I'm going to call them, just you can step up. Whenever I see someone like you, one of my friends is very tall, I know it's very low, but we can't do it. That's where I am personally. Yeah, Christina Sanchez and Zachary Gadsick, both of you are up after this. So, but, Mr. Hannan, why don't you go?
Sure. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable City Council staff. On behalf of the Los Angeles Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council, our 48 affiliates and over 140,000 members, I'd like to start off by asking you to approve the Ocean Avenue project. And I want to recognize the applicant, not just for the creating great careers for building trades members like my brothers and sisters in IBW Local 11, but by doing the right thing for the hospitality jobs and the operations jobs inside that are going to go long after we've built this beautiful project. I want to recognize the applicant for making sure that there's fair standards and working conditions on the job for all of the Unite Here members. On June 30th of this year, we had the final documents approved by the Santa Monica Malibu School District to partner with our Building Trades Council, our affiliates, on a new apprenticeship readiness program. The students coming out of that program are going to enter their careers in building trades apprenticeships, and the project labor agreement that this project's going to be built under is going to have prioritized hiring preferences for those graduates, other residents of the city, veterans, and surrounding communities. I'm a little bit biased, and not often someone in the audience could correct me, so, Mr. Gehry, you could correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe our construction workforce and our membership here is the best-trained in the world. I believe we're the most efficient, and hopefully for the residents of Santa Monica, we construct this beautiful project, that our members are going to be proud to work on something this iconic with the most minimal impact to the city residents. And again, want to ask for your approval.
Thanks, Mr. Hannan, and I want to compliment the folks in the audience who learn so quickly, fastest-learning audience. And now Christina Sanchez, please. And this is four minutes, because you have translation, is that correct? Thank you very much.
Good evening, mayors. Mi nombre es Cristina Navarro.
That's my culpa. It was my fault.
Okay. Me complace apoyar este proyecto que ayudara a muchas familias trabajadoras como yo.
Hi, my name is Christina Navarro. I'm glad to support this project. It'll help working families like mine.
Necesitamos proyectos como estos, más viviendas asequibles, buenos empleos y protección ambiental.
We need projects like this that have affordable housing, good jobs, and environmental protections.
Este proyecto tiene viviendas asequibles. Necesitamos viviendas asequibles para nuestras familias que dan, eh, quedarse aquí en Santa Monica.
This project has affordable housing. We need affordable housing so that our families can continue to stay in Santa Monica.
Este proyecto también es bueno para los medios ambientes. Necesitamos mantener Santa Monica segura y hermosa.
This, this project will also protect the environment. We need to help make sure that Santa Monica stays beautiful and safe.
Para la generación de futuras.
For future generations.
Finalmente, este proyecto promete buenos empleos para los trabajadores. Estos trabajadores marcarán las diferencias para muchas familias locales.
Finally, this job has many good jobs for its workers, and these jobs make a difference for many local families. It will make a difference.
Vote yes, and muchas gracias.
Thank you very much, and thanks for sharing two nights with us this week. So, thanks for coming out. And our last speaker is Zachary Gadsick.
Good evening. I'm excited. This is my first time ever actually testifying in person. I've done it over the phone, but this is really exciting. Okay. Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Zachary Gadsick, and I am a lifelong resident of Santa Monica, currently serving as West Metro Field Deputy for LA County Supervisor Sheila Kewell. I'm a member of the Ocean Park Association Board of Directors and a former member of Climate Action Santa Monica's steering committee as well. However, tonight, my comments are mine and mine alone. I urge you to please vote tonight to approve this exciting project in our downtown. Sorry, it's hard to breathe through, because I'm a little bit nervous. It is my first time. And so, I know that you've all been paying attention to this project for a long time. It's been in the works for several years and has undergone an evolution that has made a fantastic concept into a truly great project. I'm not going to go through and recite all the wonderful and exciting aspects of this project, as I'm sure we're all very familiar with it by now, even though I do want to plug the 100 units of housing, which are really critical for our community and for our region right now, especially the 25 units of affordable units that we really need. But in my opinion, one of the best features by far is the public viewing deck, from which visitors, residents, and children will be able to take in a spectacular 360-degree view of Santa Monica Bay from Palos Verdes to Point Dune and around the Santa Monica Mountains, a view that today is given exclusively to our vehicles and HVAC maintenance workers. I believe that everyone should have access to that wonderful view. Additionally, I'm thrilled here that this project is shooting for the coveted LEED Platinum Certification in Environmental Sustainability, because something that is more important than ever, as we know climate change and water scarcity are here, and climate resiliency is the only way that we're going to be able to move forward. So I hope you will consider the outstanding design and the wide range of benefits that the project offers, and vote yes. Thanks to the city staff for all the work that's gone into this complex proposal, and tonight, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for coming out tonight and for your comment. And now, we go back to the applicant. You have two more minutes.
Hi. I'm Jana Belkey. I've met many of you. But before Jeff speaks, I've just been asked to clarify that on one of our slides, it might look a little bit strange, but we have 64 market-rate units, we have 25 affordable, and then it says we have 11 rent-controlled. But we want everyone to understand that all 19 of our units are being replaced on-site. It's just that some, the eight of them are also deed-restricted affordable. So all 19 are under the jurisdiction of the Rent Control Board, but some of them are also deed-restricted affordable. If it happens that somebody that is currently in the unit moves back in and does not qualify for that, they remain in the unit at their rate now, and when they leave, if they ever leave, then it reverts to an affordable unit. Just wanted to make that clarification.
Reverts to an affordable deed-restricted unit?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Gotcha.
I wasn't going to explain that. I just want to say again, you know, thank you for your time, the audience, the folks watching, and again, for staff, for all the years of all the work that we put through in this project. That's all.
And thank you so much for what you've done. And on that note, we are closing the public comment, and we're up for any other questions or discussion from any members of council. Does anyone want to go? Councilmember Brock.
So I, in terms of development, these are minute questions, very small. And I'm so happy that the gestation of this project... And I'm so happy that the gestation of this project from 2013 to now has really, really been tremendous and answered so many of the public's questions. I think it's rare that since I'm considered part of the slow-growth part of the city that I can be so enthusiastic about a project as well. My two questions are both very minor and both of these I talked to Jeff Worth about in his showroom for this project. One, while we're charging a dollar for access to the roof, I expressed a concern in his office that people, regardless of whether they had a dollar bill on them, could still be allowed on the roof. And I think the planning commission also mentioned that when they voted unanimously for this project. So, I'd like to know where we are on that. And then, should I get an answer to that first?
Sure.
Jeff, someone? I just want to make sure no one's turned away.
You know, we made a commitment back in 2013 to generate proceeds for the Santa Monica Education Foundation. I think you heard a lot of people here feeling that's a strong aspect of this project. So, I hope that we can agree that a dollar is a very nominal charge, but what it produces, you can do some pretty quick math and figure out it's going to be a meaningful impact to them forever. And so, I really, I hopefully don't have to go back on that promise to them. I hope we can agree that, you know, it's just a dollar and fortunately, you know, we'll have all the machines in the world, so you just have your card, you don't have to actually have the cash on you. But hopefully, you can agree that the trade-off is a bigger benefit to the city and to the community to support the programs with the kids. You know, I'd ask that you would look at it that way.
Okay.
May I ask a quick follow-up? So, when I was there, we talked about having it a dollar for 13 and over, under 13 is free, did you?
Yeah, I thought that language was, was that language included? Okay, I was, internally, we talked about having it free for children 13 or 12 or 13 and younger.
I can't, 12 or 13, one of those ages, but did, and does it pencil even at that so kids are free and?
Yeah, obviously, it's less revenue, but I still think that's a, if that's a great compromise.
And that satisfies him, so.
It's fine.
Whatever, 12, 13.
Well, you want elementary kids.
13 is a very significant age for us Jews, right?
Right, there you go.
If you are, you know, yeah, so 12 is okay.
Okay, 12 and younger, yeah.
I think, I think, just sorry, just, I think if kids can visit on their own, though, they should be paying a dollar and 12-year-olds, like a group of 12-year-olds, can be dropped off and visit on their own. I think we're setting this age a little bit too high as a mom with kids. I think 10 and under.
So, I personally would never be dropping my kids when they were aged 12, but.
I mean, that's seventh grade.
I would accept 10, I would accept 10 and under.
10 and under?
And then, my second question, we also talked about the museum. And I know that Prisker Award winner Gary said he did not want this to be his museum. He wanted it to be the community's museum. And I expressed to you, when I was in your office, that I wanted to make sure that this museum also reflected the Santa Monica community. So, we talked about everything from Beach Life to the Santa Monica History Museum, having rotating exhibits that the summer could be all about Santa Monica Beach. The director of the Pier Corp has been trying to get a museum or partial museum. You saw one of the exhibits at Pier 360 a week ago on the pier. So, I, for my part, I'd like to make sure that this wonderful new museum also reflects the culture and history and future of Santa Monica. So, I know you're planning on rotating exhibits. I'd like you to really give some thought to the people at the pier, people at the Santa Monica History Museum, as well as art. And obviously, architecture as well.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
So, let me just say, I mean, I, I, one of my best friends is, was a curator of the Corcoran in Washington and I would never presume to tell her what to show in her museum. I don't know who will be, you know, the director of your museum. But I, I'm not familiar with any city ever telling the director of a museum what to put in it, sorry. But you tell me.
Can I ask if Mr. Worth can answer?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think that, I do think that's a wide range of what you just went through and what I'm hopeful.
I know, I gave you a really wide range.
Right, and what I'm hopeful is the commitment to local artists, local architects, things like that, will reflect Santa Monica, will reflect the past and the future of Santa Monica, but.
So, the emphasis will be on our town?
Well, we're going to have.
Is that a way to?
We'll definitely have exhibits that feature local artists and local architects. I think that's a way that we can brag about Santa Monica to the, to the world.
Okay.
Thanks.
I told you I would bring that up, so I'm.
No, I appreciate it, I'm glad you brought it up again.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks.
Is that it? Yes, Councilmember Davis.
So, let me start with something more mundane. How did you arrive at 285 parking spaces? We've had numerous hotels built in this community that we set the parking at a particular level and now that they're built are way overparked. So, I'm curious how you got to 285.
Yeah, you know, today, it's hard to know how many parking stalls you need because unfortunately, most of ours are empty, unfortunately. But we use a parking consultant to go through parking demand study for both the hotel and the residents and that's what the, I think we actually are exceeding the number by a little bit from what they came up with.
I, I, I mean, is there a way to do the development agreement? And maybe this is a question for the city attorney that says it has a maximum of 285 parking spaces? And the reason I ask that is because the world is changing. People are using scooters, people are using e-bikes and as this goes through coastal and things, that's fine. But I just, you know, the idea that we have a lot of concrete buried in this town with unused parking spaces that are, it's a waste of energy, it's a waste of resources, it's bad for the environment. And so, I'm just curious if there's a way to construct it so that it's the maximum of 285. So, if in the next two or three years, things on the ground change, you know, for example, whoop, be careful, Ms. Cola. You know, for example, I would hope that you would have e-bikes available to your hotel patrons so that they could literally travel up and down the beach cities without having to use a car. But I'm just curious if that's possible.
Just hearing some whispering behind me, so I want to get that.
I can see the brain trust fact.
I respond.
Well, while the brain trust is working, let me say, while I'm fine with the 10 and under being in free, perhaps we could say if accompanied by an adult.
Oh, you mean you don't want 10-year-olds being dropped off?
Yeah, I don't know what your 10-year-olds feel like, but I'm sure Mr. Worth.
I would not have dropped anywhere.
Yeah, well, I would have, but my, 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 Child Protective Service has got a call a couple of times about my kid walking home from school unattended. The four blocks apparently between Franklin and San Vicente were the most dangerous part of town. But literally, I mean, it does seem to me that it's a nominal fee that people stay paid with this. You don't have to have the buck on you. It is a steady stream of revenue, but I think 10 and under, so long as they're accompanied by an adult, that's fine. I do want to address the museum question. I certainly agree with the mayor that none of us up here are qualified to tell you how to program the museum. But, but I view this, and maybe I have more lofty thoughts about this, as a real world-class museum. Mr. Gary, as someone said, Bilbao Museum is a spectacular place. And I, I, that kind of spectacular architecture, that kind of spectacular placemaking invites spectacular artists. And while we certainly want to feature local artists, we have some spectacular local artists. I mean, we've had Laddie John Dill, Mr. Baldassari. I mean, we, you know, we have very, for lack of a better term, true major artists in this community. And so, while I think those people, I mean, you know, anyone who looks at a Laddie John Dill painting thinks of Santa Monica. And so, I think that is the sort of thing that I would like to see here. It's the sort of thing that we don't have and I think would really make a difference, particularly right there on Ocean Avenue, which I consider to be the most prominent avenue on the west coast of the United States. So, while I think that we do want it to reflect local artists and including up-and-coming local artists, I think it's important that we don't try and micromanage it, but I also think it's that we set our standards high and this be a truly world-class museum. Certainly, anything that's going to contain anything contributed by Mr. Gary, which we are eternally grateful for, deserves to be surrounded by other world-class media.
Yeah, we agree. Hopefully, I didn't misspeak, I wasn't trying to say it would only be local artists. Listen, in the beginning, we talked about a sculpture garden here. And as residents, after the third time you walk by that, you don't need to go by there again, right? So, the idea with this museum and the commitment, the financial commitment to it is that we're going to be rotating all the time. So, there'll be definitely shows regarding local artists, but we're going to, you know, Frank's got a lot of friends and a lot of people are going to want to be involved with this. So, we're going to bring artists from all over the world as well into it.
And I think, by the way, that that will increase its educational value to the students who will be going there. I just returned from London and Paris, two cities that are awash in magnificent museums. And even some of the ones I've been to multiple times, because they have rotating exhibits, they're worth going back to visit and it will be worth having our young people go. They won't go, yeah, I've been that, seen that, you know, there will be something new for them to explore and learn from.
Does anyone help me answer the first question?
We're just working on a few edits to the development agreement language, but we can clarify.
I mean, yeah, I don't want you to have a problem at Coastal about parking or anything like that, but it just, you know.
As long as we can keep that clarification, that if Coastal trumps, you're right. But we haven't had a problem with that, we've been able to convince them so far, but we don't want to have to come back.
Well, I'm hoping the bird of rationality has light on many, lit on many people's heads that we have a history of overbuilding parking in this city. So, I think if, I'm fine with the numbers, as long as it's a maximum, but if things on the ground change, as things develop, you can adjust that, that would be great.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that, is that your last question?
That is my last question.
So, do we have any other questions? Councilmember Park?
I just had silly questions.
Oh, that's okay.
No, one of the things that we talked about was schools. And I saw something youth, but it wasn't very specific. We talked about, I saw it said about the public schools and field trips. And, you know, there's a lot of schools.
Right.
In Santa Monica, not just public schools. And I used my kid's school as an example because they literally could walk to the museum. And so, there would be, there will be opportunities for other schools to, in Santa Monica, to have field trips and what have you to the museum and there'll be days set aside for other Santa Monica schools to have their opportunities to.
Yeah, we've got 52 Mondays a year, right?
Well, I mean, so it's going to be, there's going to be dedicated days, there's going to be, it's just because I, I, I mean, maybe I missed that because I only saw Santa Monica public schools.
You're correct, that's what, that's what we initially proposed. What I'm, if we're talking, if we just say Santa Monica schools.
I think it would be nice if you just said Santa Monica schools because St. Monica's is walking distance to the museum and I know that they walk to the fire station and to the police station for field trips. I know they walk to the pier for field trips. And so, I think it would be amazing if other schools in Santa Monica also have the opportunity to have field trips.
I understand.
And I haven't seen the public school limitation.
It said Santa Monica public school.
No, I'm saying I'm not, I've not seen it in other documents that reflect access to schools. So, does anyone have an objection to changing it to schools from public schools?
What, I mean, if it's just a Santa Monica schools and just take out the public, yeah.
No, that's what I'm suggesting, there'd just be Santa Monica schools. But then, my question is, is there any legal reason to specify public schools? So, that's an easy change, you strike out one word.
Thank you.
Assuming that you agree.
Yeah, I think the clarification that I was just given was, it was not to say that other schools weren't allowed. It was that we were going to fund the transportation for the public schools.
Well, I mean, I'm sure public school, private schools can probably pay for it.
That, that, that's the clarification, it wasn't supposed to eliminate.
Well, no, but I'm, well, St. Monica's can walk.
Right, no, I'm joking.
But I'm just saying, they just need, I just, I'm trying to just get them the opportunity to be able to.
That's fine.
Go on.
Yeah, so.
No, and maybe you can take out the transportation part, I don't know. I'm not trying to tell you what to do, I'm just trying to get them to be able to go.
So, so I think we have a motion to include all schools in the access program, but only public schools in the providing transportation program. So, is that something that's good for you, Mr. Worth?
That works for me.
And are there any objections to that on the dais?
I'm fine with that.
So, you're fine with it?
Thank you.
Anything else?
I think that was it.
Okay, well, I think then.
Wait, I think there was one more thing, too. I think we talked about, I think we talked about one other thing, too. We were talking about potential community events. We did.
Yeah, I think one thing that we've spoke about with some other council members was allowing an additional day per month for the rooftop to be closed for a nonprofit, Santa Monica-based nonprofit event. That's one of the things that was discussed in some of the meetings.
And was that acceptable to you?
Yeah, I think, I think right now, there's, there's six closure dates and we were, we were talking about adding a seventh that had to be only used by a nonprofit in Santa Monica.
Yeah, no, that, wait, but, oh, so six closure dates a month, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, and then now, that would be seven closure dates, but I just want to make sure, excuse me.
Five going to six, sorry, not six.
Five going to six and is that but one a month, does that work for you?
Yeah, just for nonprofits.
Okay, and that seems to work for everybody, go ahead.
I was just going to say, if one a month was too much, that it could be spread out, but you're fine with one a month?
We're fine.
Just thinking about taking away from what you're already giving back to education.
I appreciate it, not.
I think it works.
Thank you.
I may not find 12 a year that, you know, are ready to do it, but I think it works to have it offered.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, so any other questions or comments? So, now I think, that's good because now we're ready to vote, this could be a record. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I thought questions or comments, yes, discussion.
I just, I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm just really glad that I get to be here for what I think is a truly historic moment for our city to get to potentially move this project forward. And I want to thank Mr. Gary for what just appears to be a love letter, I think, to Santa Monica and really sort of encapsulates so much of your artistry over your career. And as a local, this is such a beautiful way to give back and then Jeff and the whole project team to truly meet sort of the goals that the city set out for projects of this type. It's, it's, it's just a really magnificent thing and I can't wait to see it open and assuming it passes tonight, which I think it will, because you guys did do everything the right way. And I really appreciate Mr. Gary's comments about trying to figure out a design that spoke to what this city is. And I think this in our sort of tourist-heavy center will be such a global attraction. And I was glad to see Brury here today to be able to speak to that, too, because people already come here from all over the world, but we have been missing for so long a great art museum and some, just some of these elements, whether it's the architecture of the buildings and, and again, the high-caliber museum, this is going to draw people in and it's going to jumpstart and reinvigorate a downtown that we've been trying to bring residents back to. We know that residents have to have something to go to downtown. We know that residents have to have something to go to downtown on a regular basis. The beauty of the museum is it's going to make us want to keep going back. And so I'm, I'm just thrilled. This is such like an honor to be able to be here, to be able to vote on this project. And so I just thank you all so much.
Councilmember Brock?
I mentioned already earlier that I was really gratified by the developers' attention to detail and attention to honoring the items, the things that Santa Monica really wanted. And I hope this is a catalyst for smart development throughout our city from now on. The fact that the affordable housing is mixed in, it's not separate, it's not being stigmatized. The fact that that is being done in thoughtful consideration of all the residents of the city, that is extraordinary. That's what I wish we had been seeing for years in the city. So Jeff, I thank you for that. And Mr. Geary has been known for creating controversial architecture that later everyone just goes, wow. And yes, I've been to the Guggenheim and Bilbao and many of Frank's other projects and driven by his house many, many hundreds of times in Santa Monica. I love the creative vision that Frank Geary possesses. The fact that he, for decades now, in everything he's done, from chairs to buildings to everything, has been able to, to think outside the box and have a creativity that others may possess, but don't really dare do. So Frank, I thank you for doing throughout your career and expanding what an architect is thought of, has been able to do. Because your daring architecture allows other architects to also be daring in their lives. So yes, I am, I am 100% for this project. I think it will spur other great projects in the city. And Frank, I hope you're not done designing in Santa Monica. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Negrete.
I think everybody's beautifully articulated how much we appreciate this project. And I don't want to belabor the, the yes vote tonight. But I just wanted to say that something I really appreciated was the open space. I live in an apartment. I grew up in one. And I'm really jealous of those that are gonna have a really beautiful open space connected to their living space. And you really encapsulated everything we are, from art, culture to people. We are diverse in so many ways in Santa Monica. So thank you for giving us this project.
And so now, if nobody else has anything to say, we're gonna move to voting. But I have one favor to ask because a couple of people on the dais have brought this up before we leave, after we vote. And I'm assuming this will pass. Can we all get a picture with you? And the design right up here, please. And you too, Jeff. You can stand to the side. Thank you. So I assume, and I'm turning to the city attorney because we were discussing making motions more compact. But is this as compact as we can get it?
You may make a motion to approve the item as recommended with the changes that were discussed tonight.
But wait, no, 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 we have to do the sequence, stuff like that, don't we?
You can take it all together if you'd like. You may.
Amen.
Hey, yeah, I'm with you. Wait, wait, wait. Yes? This is one we don't want to mess up. I just want to make sure.
Anyone, councilmember, could ask to divide the question and consider something separately. But legally, you can consider everything together. Yes.
Does anybody object to considering this matter in one motion?
No, I move the staff recommendation with the adjustments and amendments that have been discussed here tonight.
I second.
Okay, so push your buttons. Move by Davis, seconded by McCowen, and let's have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Mayor Patim McCowen?
Yes.
Councilmember Negrete?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Parra?
Yes.
And Mayor Hamerich.
Yes, and that passes six to zero. And now everybody can clap. Ready? Okay, it only took 20 years. It wasn't so bad.
Are we standing back here?
No, I think, don't you want to go down?
Well, yeah, I don't know because you, I don't know how you'll get the modular. I feel like he should come up here. Shouldn't he come up here and then?
The other one was on a higher table. But wait, hold on, we want to.
Can we lift it and put it, can we put it right here?
I know, but we, it didn't get all, like mine. But like, if you were to ask me, I'm like, oh, yeah, they all are subject, just some of them.
Well, I know, right?
One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Well, we'll do, let's just do another round. All righty, one, two, three. One, two, three. I'm gonna do a whole round with the stage. One, two, three, smile.
You know, I have one with Frank when we did the first public meeting.
Jeff?
Yeah.
I still have, I still want that request.
Oh, for sure. Oh, for sure. Soon. Yeah. Do you want me to take your picture? No, no, let's do it.
Okay, City Council, everybody else can party, but, but we have a little more to do. You're back. You missed the best part. This was the best meeting. That was the best. Well, you know what? This is, I mean, this is, I think, the only major project downtown I voted for. That's okay. I, I mean, everybody.
Oh, there's Lana, okay. Okay, Mayor, are we ready? Lana's over here. She's, she's up here. Are we ready, Mayor?
Okay, we are back in session on the special meeting of Thursday, July 14th, 2022. And Madam Clerk, I guess we're on the eights now, or is that correct?
Yeah, so we're on the eights. So this is the annual appointments for the boards and commissions. And we're starting off with the architectural, I'm sorry, with Architectural Review Board. And there are two, there's two, there's two vacancies that expire and you have the two incumbents who apply.
So the two incumbents are Kaufman and Daley.
Daley, yes.
And are there any other names that anyone wants to offer? Should we do that by acclamation?
There's no other names to offer.
There's no other names on the list.
Nobody else applied.
Okay, so by acclamation.
By acclamation.
Okay, good. So Ms. Kaufman and Mr. Daley, welcome back to the ARB.
So next we have the Arts Commission, and we have two seats for the Arts Commission. And we have.
One incumbent, right?
We have one incumbent, Mary Elizabeth Michaels.
So.
I nominate Mary Elizabeth Michaels.
By acclamation? She's an incumbent. Okay, by acclamation, welcome back to the Arts Commission, Ms. Michaels. And we have an odd thing with this because we got a recommendation, is this the one? No, not that. I sent that. We can talk about it. I sent the, the sustainability. I asked Denise to distribute that. That's a, no, but we have one more to do on the Arts Commission.
I recommend, I nominate Kara Fox.
Kara, I'm sorry, who was it?
Fox.
Oh, Fox, okay.
And I nominate Federico Galavies.
Any other names?
Okay, let me call the roll. Councilmember De La Torre. And I'm sorry, it's Fox. The two names are Fox and Galavias.
Galavies.
Yeah, Fox and Michaels?
No, Fox and Galavias.
And you have to choose between those.
Okay, so Fox. Okay, so Fox.
Councilmember Brock.
Fox.
Mayor Potem McCowen, Galavies. Councilmember Negrete.
Sorry, this is arts, right?
Yes.
Yeah, Galavies.
Councilmember Davis.
Galavies.
Councilmember Parra.
Fox.
Mayor Himmerich.
Um, oh, this is where my vote counts, finally, right? Galavies, sorry.
So Galavies has four votes.
Um, now we do, and congratulations, Ms. Galavies, and welcome to.
Mister.
Mister.
Mister Galavies, I'm sorry, and welcome to the arts commission.
So next, we have the Commission on Sustainability, Environment, Environmental Justice and the Environment, and there are two vacancies for that, and we have the two incumbents, um, Robert Lampert and Eric Niederdross.
Nandross, yes, and, and I sent this because, um, I, I, I asked the clerk to circulate this letter from the FPPC, um, because there was a question before about Mr. Nandross, um, uh, because he's a consultant who does work primarily for, um, fossil fuel companies, it appears. Um, which, let me just say that, um, I've done work for utilities, my husband has done work for utilities, I mean, I, I, I understand that people need representation. The question is whether somebody who represents Southern California Gas, PG&E, SDG&E, et cetera, et cetera, is somebody that really should be on our, um, sustainability or our, yeah, our sustainability commission. Um, so with that said, you now have the information I have. Um, and, and so I'm gonna start with Lampert, who is also an incumbent, right, and still has, yeah, so, um, I'm gonna put that name in.
Do you guys wanna do one at a time?
Yeah, I, I would like to do one at a time. So Lampert, um, by acclamation?
By acclamation.
Okay, a- and now, my, uh, Mr. Nandross has asked for, um, reappointment, and I'm gonna put, um, in, I, I did, I only wrote the last name, it's Tower.
Okay, is there, is there another nomination?
Dr. Alexandra Tower.
Yes, Dr. Alexandra Tower, thank you.
Is there another nomination?
Other than?
Tower.
Than Tower? No, okay.
No, so by acclamation? Yes, and, and so thank you, Mr. Nandross, for your service, and welcome to the Sustainability Commission, Dr. Tower.
Okay, so next, we have the Disabilities Commission, there are three, and this gets complicated. We only have two applicants, and just to let you guys know that, um, that Thomas John Hill is turned out briefly. So he's done his time, so he can't, and then Wetter, so I'm, I'm sorry, I have notes here. So it says, um, Disabilities Commission, Delbert Wetter, and Kara Hindler. Kara did, is, was not required to reapply because she was reappointed a month and a half ago, so that's one. And then the other one is Wetter and John, and John, like I said, John Hill is termed out.
No, no, that, those are the incumbents, but I have another name on that, that we have other app.
So we have Alexandra Blanc, who is the person who identifies as disabled, and Joseph, is it Antonini?
Antonini. So if we have two people for three vacancies, can we do them by acclamation? And then maybe recirculate for the third spot?
I, wait, I, I'm confused because I had three, so is Hindler still, Hindler is an incumbent who is up again, right? And is not termed out?
Yeah, but she's not on, but she's not on the list, she's not on the list.
Oh, so we have three, a- and we only have two people?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So let's do it by acclamation, okay. Thank you. So Wetter and Antonini by acclamation?
No, Blanc and Antonini.
I'm sorry, Antonini and Blanc by acclamation?
Right.
Uh, good, so, um, welcome to the Disabilities Commission, we will be recruiting for the third vacancy.
Okay, and then for the Housing Commission, we have two, we have Leonore, Leonore Camner, who's the incumbent, who wishes to be reappointed. Do you wanna separate these two?
Yes, I think we should.
Okay. So the, for the first seat, nominations?
Leonore Camner.
Katie Everts.
Any other?
Katie Everts.
Katie Everts.
Yes.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, Councilmember De La Torre, so it's Camner or Everts?
Kate, yeah, Kate Everts.
Councilmember Brock?
Kate Everts.
Mayor Potem McCowen?
Camner.
Councilmember Negrete?
Everts.
Councilmember Davis?
Camner.
Councilmember Parra?
Everts.
And Mayor Himmerich?
Everts.
So, uh, Ms. Everts, welcome to the Housing Commission.
Okay, so now we have a second seat, nominations, please?
Uh, Garcia.
Borisson.
So we have Borisson, and we have Garcia, are there any other nominations? Okay, Councilmember Brock?
Borisson.
I'm sorry, I went completely out of order, I apologize. Councilmember Parra? So it's Borisson or Garcia?
Borisson.
Councilmember Davis?
Garcia.
Councilmember Negrete?
Desmond, Desmond Borisson, sorry.
Oh, okay. Mayor Potem McCowen?
Lydia Garcia.
Mayor Potem McCowen?
Lydia Garcia.
Mayor Potem, I'm sorry. Councilmember De La Torre?
Borisson.
And Mayor Himmerich?
Uh, Lydia Garcia.
So Borisson has four votes.
I think she got it.
She got me first out of order.
Yeah, I meant to say Parra first.
Uh, welcome to the Housing Commission, Mr. Borisson. Ellen, and thank you, Ms. Camner, for your service.
Next, we have landmarks, and there are three vacancies, and we have Roger Genser and Dolores Sloan, and Dolores Sloan is requesting a third term.
Should we do, so we should do that term separately then, because that needs more votes?
Yeah, we have, we need five votes for that, yes.
I nominate Ms. Sloan.
We don't, so let's do her by herself and make sure she gets her five.
Well, I mean, if someone wants to nominate someone to compete with her, they can, but she needs five votes, so we need to do her separate.
So let's do her separate, right, is everyone in favor of Ms. Sloan, or do they?
Yes.
Yes, everybody is, so by acclamation.
Yes, now, Roger Genser.
Well.
Well, so he's the other incumbent, right?
Right, okay.
So, so I will put his name in, Genser.
Are there any other nominations?
Nope, so by acclamation?
Absolutely.
Yes, a- and this is where I was confused, so there's another name in the mix named, uh, uh, Felon and Kaplan?
There's two names.
Oh, okay, so.
At least. Kaplan was a late addition.
Kaplan was a late submission.
Okay, so now we, we.
Can, can I ask a question? It's my understanding, Ms. Anderson Warren, that even though someone submits an application late, we can still vote to put them on a commission.
They can still be considered, yes.
Right, I mean, we've actually done that in the past with people who've literally.
That's done it like here, yeah.
I nominate, uh, McCully.
Kaplan.
Uh, okay, let's go through the roll.
Councilmember De La Torre?
McCully.
Councilmember Brock?
McCully.
Mayor Potem McCowen?
Kaplan.
Councilmember Negrete?
Kaplan.
Councilmember Davis?
Kaplan.
Councilmember Parra?
McCully.
And Mayor Himmerich?
Kaplan, so Mr. Kaplan, welcome to the Landmarks Commission.
Okay, next, we have Personnel Board, and there's one seat available, and we have.
Janine.
No incumbents, so it's Janine Bush, Daniel Ivano, and Marie Manville.
I'd like to nominate Bush, Janine Bush.
By acclamation?
Any other nominations?
No, by acclamation, welcome, Janine, to the Personnel Board.
Okay, next, we have Planning Commission, and there's one seat available for that, and Sean Landries is incumbent, and he is requesting reappointment.
Sean Landries? I don't know, I said Landries, it's Landers.
So are we, by acclamation, or are there any other?
I'm nominating Sizik.
Who are you nominating?
Tom Sizik is.
Sizik.
Is his name in?
He's not on my list.
He's a late addition.
I never saw anything from him, did, did we ever?
Is he Josh Hamilton, Marie Manville, and Sean Landries?
No, so what?
He was on, he's on the website.
Not on, not where I saw it. I saw Hamilton, Manville, and Landers.
Yeah, I only have the three.
Josh, not on the list, not there.
Okay, he talked to Assistant City Clerk, and she said he had got in on time.
Obviously. Well, you can, you can, he, well, we just cleared up with the clerk that even, fact is, even if he didn't submit an application, you can nominate him.
Oh, even if, I thought that was just a delay.
They do have to submit.
Oh, don't they have to, they have to submit an application, okay, I, I thought the rule was.
All right, so Denise?
But if it's late, right, yes.
Right, he is not active on the website?
I am not, no, I.
For planning?
Not for planning.
Okay.
So we have Landris, Hamilton, and Manville, a- and, um.
And Negrete.
I said Sean Landers.
Oh, are you, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you.
Am I nominating myself?
Yeah, right, that's what I thought, anyway, uh. Yeah, so any other names, I, uh, I heard from Negrete, um, Landris, so anybody else?
This is by acclamation?
By acclamation, Sean Landris? Okay, so welcome back to the Planning Commission, Sean. And now we have the Public Safety, I'm sorry, you're doing this, Denise.
Public Safety Reform, that's fine, it's two, uh, two appointments. And we have another one later, it's a vacancy, so if, let me know how you wanna do it, so let's do these two seats first, so we have Craig Miller.
Can I go back for one second?
Sure.
I'm sorry. I just got a note from the other applicant, that he's, I'm looking at his screenshot of the website. It says Josh Hamilton, Marie Manville, Sean Landris, and Tom Sizik, late submission. And he just sent me notes, I'm on there, I'm on there. I'm active, what, I'm on there, Office of the City Clerk, current applicants.
Uh, do you wanna move to reopen?
Yes, I moved to reopen, but I'd like to have the city clerk verify that, but I'm looking at, I'm looking at a screenshot that shows he's on there.
Why don't we just vote? We have Landris and we have Sizik.
Well, we could just vote, right, if he's said that he.
Yeah, I'm trying to see if.
I don't know, I just.
Can we say anything on the, on the candidates?
No, we don't talk about them.
On the candidates, no?
That would be rude.
By the way, we did verify that the count, that an applicant must submit an application and must be timely to be considered.
Must be timely?
Why do we get the list and it says late applica- late application?
Yeah, we've done that before, we just appointed a Landmarks Commissioner who was a late applicant.
Yeah, I mean, we've done that.
We just had, uh, the resolution for the Boards and Commissions approved January eleventh, twenty twenty-two, so this is what's written into the, into that resolution.
Oh, so this could be new.
This could be new.
Because I know in the past, we've literally had people come in and say, I'd like to be appointed, and we've put them on commissions or submit their application that day.
And the last appointment we did, which was after January, we would get the list and it says late applicant, but we still vote on them, so don't. Yeah, it looks like we've changed the rules, so if we.
Okay, so.
Well, this is a resolution.
So then Tom Sizik cannot be considered, so Sean Landris stays.
Right, but.
Correct, but then we do need to go back and redo that Landmarks Commission.
Well, no, I think, if, what is timely, I mean, does timely necessarily mean by the original dead, yeah?
Okay, let's move on to something where we don't have on.
We're just reading the, both of them, so just to let you, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the online, both of them submitted on, um, the eleventh. They both submitted on July eleventh.
Who are we talking about?
The Landmarks Commissioner and the Planning Commission.
For Kaplan and for Sizik, is that who it is?
Yes.
Yes.
Sizik, right, they both submitted on the eleventh, and I think the deadline was the eighth.
Oh, I think it was.
Was it, was it the?
They extended the deadline because we, remember when we continue?
We always do it to the Thursday before, right, or the?
But because you got, but because they were carried over from Tuesday to today, I, I'm sorry, I wasn't here, you guys, so I don't know what Nikki told people, but.
So that would make the eleventh the deadline?
The eleventh would have been, right, so the eleventh would have been Monday.
Can we move, can, can we waive the filing requirements, is the council?
Well, it sounds like they were on time.
Well, well, wait a minute, I'm, I'm confused, because I think, were they timely? If July eleventh was timely?
Yeah, it appears as though they're both timely.
Can I, I'll just read it in there, what it says is that the deadline for submission of applications shall not be less than fifteen days prior to the end of the term.
What?
That's artful. Yeah, but that's what. Submission?
And then it does, and it says that if they're not timely, they can't be considered, however, this is by resolution, so I do think that you have flexibility here if you modify that by, by a vote.
Well, fifteen days, wait a minute, so before the end of the term, are you sure that's not for incumbents?
Advertising fifteen days? I don't think it's submission.
Unfortunately, that's the way it's written, but maybe this is not what was intended, it says the deadline for submission of applications shall not be less than fifteen days prior to the end of the term.
Oh, the end of the term.
That's for publishing the opening.
Right, right, so the end of the term was, was in Jan-, was in June.
Yeah.
June thirtieth was the term.
We kept pushing it, so this is a whole different situation. I think based on your definition, the eleventh was a timely submission.
But again, it was adopted by resolutions, you have flexibility.
Application submitted on July eleventh timely for the purposes of our vote.
Okay, so now we're going back to vote.
I need a sec.
Second, no.
It's for.
It takes five votes.
Okay, so, um, so we have to vote, do a roll call, so if we wanna say that eleventh is timely, then let's have a roll call vote.
Do you need to make the motion?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Okay, so who, I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I did.
And I, well, I think a bunch of people seconded it.
And everybody seconded it.
Back on planning.
Okay, Councilmember Parra?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Negrete?
Yes.
Mayor Potem McCowen?
Yes.
Councilmember Brock?
Yes.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Yes.
And Mayor Himmerich.
Yes, so now we can consider those two, uh.
Okay, so, so back to the Planning Commission, did you guys wanna redo that, rehear that one?
Yes.
Okay, so the Planning Commission, we now have, let's just open the floor again and add Tom back and add.
I nominate Sizik.
I nominate Landers.
Okay, let's do this again, Councilmember De La Torre?
Tom Sizik.
Councilmember Brock?
Tom Sizik.
Mayor Potem McCowen?
Sean Landris.
Councilmember Negrete?
Sean Landris.
Councilmember Davis?
Landris.
Councilmember Parra?
Sizik.
And Mayor Himmerich?
Landris.
So.
That, and he's not, this is just four required for him.
Well, I'll change, and I'll change my vote to Landris.
He, he is an incumbent, so, yeah.
I'll change my vote also.
Um.
Yeah, me too, might as well.
So, uh, by acclamation, welcome back for a second time to this Planning Commission, Mr. Landris. And should we go back to the Landmarks Commission, or is everybody happy with our vote on Kaplan?
I think we're fine.
Okay, good.
If we, if we don't legally have to go back, then let's not.
Good, well, I.
Okay, so next, we have the Recreation, okay, I'm sorry, now we're onto the Public Safety Reform, and it's two seats. Yeah, two seats, and we have Craig Miller and Joseph Palazzo, is that his name?
Lozolo.
Lozolo, those are the two incumbents. Lozolo. Those are the two incumbents.
Can we have two seats?
We have two seats.
And we have a third seat later, correct?
That's later.
So, I'm gonna say Miller.
Joseph Palazo, Palazolo.
Well, why don't we do the?
Well, we could separate them instead of hitting incumbents.
Oh, I see, oh, I didn't mean to do that then, sorry.
I'm sorry.
These are two seats.
Do you want to reappoint the two?
Right, yes, let's just reappoint the two incumbents.
Do you want to reappoint the two incumbents?
Okay, and if we want to reappoint the two incumbents, we can do it by acclamation.
Great.
Is everyone in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, do you guys want to go ahead and do the vacancy now as well, since we're on that one? Or do you want to finish the annuals?
Do the vacancy.
Yeah, we should do the vacancy on this.
Okay, so we have one vacant seat for the Public Safety. And it, yeah, it's an unscheduled vacancy, it ends in 2024, and I opened it, opened it up for nominations.
Michelle, Michelle Whitick.
Brian Sted Stroud.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, hold on, Mayor, you said Michelle Whitick?
Yes.
And Councilmember Davis?
Brian Sted Stroud.
Okay, and Councilmember Brock?
Paul Winemore.
Let me go through. So, it's, it's Sted Stroud, Winemore, or Whitick, okay? Councilmember Parr?
Winemore.
Councilmember Davis?
Sted Stroud.
Councilmember Negrete?
Winemore. I'm sorry, Winemore.
Rep. Tim McCowen?
Sted Stroud.
Councilmember Brock?
Winemore.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Whitig.
And Mayor Hamerich?
Whitig, so we have two, two, and two, is that right?
No, two, two, and three.
Two, two, and three.
Two and.
They'll go to a second round.
Two and three, yeah.
Okay, so let's do a second round.
Okay, nominations?
Winemore.
Brian Sted Stroud.
Any, any others? Okay, Councilmember De La Torre? So, it's Sted Stroud or Winemore are the options?
Winemore.
Councilmember Brock?
Winemore.
Rep. Tim McCowen?
Sted Stroud.
Councilmember Negrete?
Paul Winemore.
Councilmember Davis?
Sted Stroud.
Councilmember Parr?
Winemore.
Mayor Hamerich?
Well, I can count Winemore. Is anyone changing their votes?
So, Winemore gets the, gets that one.
I'll change my vote, Winemore.
Okay, so next we're going to Recreation and Parks, we have two seats available for, two vacancies for that. And we have Andrew Gomez and John Cyrus, John Cyrus Smith.
And they're both incumbents?
They're both incumbents.
By acclamation?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
By acclamation.
Now, we, don't we have a special since?
We have a vacancy, yes, we do, we have a vacancy.
So, should we do that next?
For that one, sure, we can do that one next. And that's for Marcy Kaplan's seat.
Oh, right.
Okay, let's open it to nominations.
Sean Besser.
Stephen Johnson.
It's a partial term. It's a partial term.
Okay, council, okay, so it's Besser and Johnson are the options. Councilmember Parr?
Johnson.
Councilmember Davis?
Besser.
Councilmember Negrete?
Stephen Johnson.
Rep. Tim McCowen?
Sean Besser.
Councilmember Brock?
Stephen Johnson.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Johnson.
Mayor Hamerich?
Johnson.
So, Johnson gets the partial seat.
So, yeah, so welcome to Park, Wreckin' Parks, Mr. Johnson.
Now, we're gonna do the Library Board. We have two vacancies for the Library Board, and we have Judith Meister as the incumbent.
So, Judith Meister by acclamation?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so Judith Meister by acclamation. And now, let's hear nominations.
Dana Newman?
Oh.
No, go ahead.
I said Dana Newman.
Raylinda Harvey Smith?
Any other nominations? So, we have Harvey Smith and Newman. Councilmember Parr?
Newman.
Councilmember Davis?
Harvey Smith.
Councilmember Negrete?
Dana Newman.
Rep. Tim McCowen?
Raylinda Harvey Smith.
Councilmember Brock?
Dana Newman.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Newman.
And Mayor Hamerich?
Harvey Smith.
Okay. So, Newman received four votes.
And I'll change my vote to Newman.
Okay. All right, we're almost done, you guys. Okay.
Santa Monica Travel and Tourism.
Santa Monica Travel and Tourism. We have three seats available. Darlene Evans is the only incumbent who's interested in reappointment.
So, should we do Evans by acclamation?
Mm-hmm.
No, not in this case.
Okay.
Okay, so I have an objection, so I'll put Evans' name in.
Okay, any other nominations?
Karen Ginsburg?
Anybody else? Okay, so it's Ginsburg and Evans are the choices. Councilmember Parr?
Ginsburg.
Councilmember Davis?
Evans.
Councilmember Negrete?
Evans.
Rep. Tim McCowen?
Evans.
Councilmember Brock?
Karen Ginsburg.
Councilmember De La Torre?
Evans.
Mayor Hamerich?
Evans.
So, Evans has six.
And now I'm gonna put Karen Ginsburg's name in.
Right, that's fine.
Any other nominations?
By acclamation?
Mm-hmm.
So, Karen Ginsburg by acclamation, and now.
Karis Snell.
Judy Barker.
Okay, well, we have three openings, right?
Yeah, but we only have one left, this is the last.
Okay, so we have Judy Barker, and we have Blade Snell. Any other nominations? Okay, Councilmember De La Torre?
Can you repeat the?
Repeat the two names?
It's Barker or Blade Snell.
Barker.
Councilmember Brock?
Barker.
Rep. Tim McCowen?
Blade Snell.
Councilmember Negrete?
Blade Snell.
Councilmember Davis?
Blade Snell.
Councilmember Parr?
Barker.
Mayor Hamerich?
Blade Snell.
So, Blade Snell gets the third appointment.
And do, do we have another one coming up on this? Why did I think we did?
I thought we did too, but.
Okay, so next we have the New Human Services Commission. We have nine seats available, we have eight candidates.
By acclamation.
Is everybody good with appointing all?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, so.
But they, but they have to go into different slots, right, because they're for different.
So, what they'll do is, they, yeah, so they, so they do it by lots, right?
Okay, that's fine.
So.
Okay, so.
So, so we have an applicant who has applied for every commission.
Reamend though?
Yes, without.
She was on Social Services, I think.
But when she got on Social Services, that was because there was no other applicant. And I really have a problem putting people on these Boards and Commissions who just want to be on a Board and Commission and haven't, just apply to all of them without any special interest or avocation in the one they're applying for. And every other person on this list I know and I've met in the community, I believe.
I've met her, she's an Elks Club member, and she's on the Salvation Army Advisory Board, but she's also a candidate for public office.
What is that name?
She's a candidate for, I think, State Board of Equalization.
Oh, she's not in, she's not on the final.
Yeah, she is.
She's in the runoff.
Oh, she is, she's in the runoff?
Yes.
So, that's all I know about her. I've met her a couple of times on Zoom because of Salvation Army Advisory Board. So, I know she wants to serve.
Well, but.
I'm just, I like Sue.
She'll be disqualified if she's elected.
But the other thing is for five months.
And I like Sue, I'm upset, there was another gentleman who I know, who applied for six or seven commissions, and then called me and said, "Why am I not being appointed?" And my view is like yours. If you have a solid interest in one thing, then I'm good.
Well, no, there was another kid, there was a kid who applied to every commission, who wasn't even here, who was at like 10:00 or something, but was applying to Boards and Commissions here as if he lived here.
Oh.
Is the objection that we should not, at least for the?
For this, I would leave her out, yes.
Seven, not the eight?
Yes.
Okay.
Does anyone object to that?
No.
I, you know, I've met her, so I.
You know, I'm a little uncomfortable talking about people.
Yeah, we're not supposed to get into that.
I mean, let's, let, let's do this. I think that perhaps we should do the seven out of eight. And then perhaps someone, maybe the mayor, could convey to Ms., what's it, Mandel? That the reason she was not appointed is because we like people on our Boards and Commissions who have in, specific interest in the subject matter.
I would be perfectly happy to convey that to others.
Right, no, I just, I just think that makes sense, because it is awkward to leave her off when there's a room, a space for her, but to convey that if there's a Board or Commission she particularly cares about, she should apply.
Which person, I'm sorry?
What I would ask is that you, when you interview her, find out her clear intent, if she really believes in serving on that Commission. And then come back to us.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Marville, I think.
Marville. I think it's Manville, and, and the other thing I believe is that probably for the next five months, she'll be a little busy anyway. So, then she can think about which one she really wants to be on, okay? So.
Was there a problem with that Commission, and we got a couple of letters?
We don't have.
No, I know we got a couple of letters from people saying they didn't get their full applications, weren't accepted by the website or something, over the last week.
I don't know, the good news is.
They still got in.
I believe they did, and the good news is that we still have two openings, so. So, so they can, i- if for some reason it got messed up, they can reapply. So.
And, and that raises a question, because we do have this, I'm sorry to muck up the works, I know we all want to go home, but we do have this issue. I'm assuming since we still have openings, the resolution that we passed saying that the time to apply to a Commission expires 15 days before the expiration of the term for which you're applying, doesn't interfere with us going out when we don't have enough applicants. I mean, that, that. So, we can still go out and seek more applicants, even though technically now we're after the deadline.
In light of this discussion tonight, I think we should offer a little cleanup of that resolution.
Gee, I think.
I, I just didn't want to run afoul of, of our resolution, that was no doubt brilliantly conceived of.
Yeah, I don't even think it addresses it that specifically, so not technically a conflict.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure, because we do need to go out and get some more people for some of these commissions. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, can I go?
So, you voted for the other guy, you can move to reconsider. You can do that, I can't.
Okay, good, so, Councilmember De La Torre wants to reopen the Public Safety and Reform Commission vote, he was in the.
Is this for the vacancy or?
For the vacancy.
Okay, hold on a second.
Yes. So. So, for the vacancy, can we do the roll call again, please, I think? Does he need a second to reopen?
Yes.
Okay, okay, seconded by acclamation will reopen? Yes.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
And who was the seconder?
Uh, Davis. Sorry. What am I doing?
Okay, so this is for the.
You can't resist anything.
So, this was for the vacancy, and it was Sted Stroud.
Teeth are gonna break.
I'm sorry. Okay, this is second one. Okay, so it was Sted Stroud, and then Paul Winemore.
That's correct.
Correct, okay. All right, so, are we redoing this vote?
Yes.
For both, or what?
Just the one opening.
There were two nominations.
There were two nominations.
I understand.
I'd like to nominate Brian Sted Stroud.
So, let's, we're gonna do a roll call.
Paul Winemore.
Are you with us, Denise?
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
Okay, so Councilmember, okay, Councilmember De La Torre?
Brian Sted Stroud.
Councilmember Brock?
Winemore.
Rep. Tim McCowen?
Sted Stroud.
Councilmember Negrete?
Winemore.
Councilmember Davis?
Sted Stroud.
Councilmember Parr?
Uh, Winemore.
And Mayor Hamerich?
Sted Stroud, so that changes our vote, and it's Sted Stroud, is that right?
I'll change my vote as well.
To Sted Stroud.
Me too.
You too?
Uh, so, we're, so does that finish, okay.
Okay, so now we're moving on to our last item, and it's a request of Mayor Hamerich that the City Council allocate the $29,000 of annual bid funding and $18,000 of discretionary funds previously discussed at their May 24, 2022 budget session. The funds include $10,000 to the West Side Coalition for the annual Martin Luther King Junior Celebration, $5,000 to the Santa Monica Little League to repair the scoreboard at Los Alamos Park, and $3,000 to San Mo High for their bilingual graduation celebration. The motion is to officially allocate the funds that was inadvertently left off the agenda for the June 28, 2022 council meeting. Okay, where the fiscal '22, '23 budget was adopted.
So, this was a cleanup, we already voted on this, and it wasn't in the budget.
I thought it was.
No, no, it wasn't in there, so we just have to do this so that we have formally voted on it. We did, we voted on it as an aside item, but not as part of the whole budget, so if we vote on it now, this will make our budget complete.
So moved, or we.
Second.
Sure, discuss.
We already, oh, no.
No, it, the name of the organization at Los Alamos Park is the Santa Monica Pony League, not Little League.
Yeah, it's just written wrong.
Okay, so.
Which is important, because they're two different organizations.
Yeah, so, so the $5,000 is actually to Santa Monica Pony League, and, and not to Little League, and as restated and amended, yes, is that still your motion?
Yes.
And seconded by McCowen, is that right? So, moved by Negrete, seconded by McCowen, may we have a?
Can't press my button.
Roll call vote, because it's money.
Okay, Councilmember Parr?
Yes.